Well, I think we'll go ahead and get started. Is that all right? There's Laurel. Good. I will call the meeting to order at 6:07 PM. Could we have a roll call of council members, starting with Chelsea and Amber?
Amber here. Chelsea here.
Thank you.
Amber?
Here.
Thank you. Laurel? Laurel can't hear me yet. Vicki, want to cut here? And that's all we have.
We need Laurel, though.
I know. I need Laurel to say she's here.
So close.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes. Can you say that you're here, please?
I'm here.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. Who would like to read the invocation? I will do that. "This is our school. May peace dwell here. May the rooms be full of contentment. May love abide here, love of one another, love of our school, and love of life itself. Let us remember that as many hands build a house, so many hearts build a school." Moving on to item 1.4, do we have any agenda modifications? Yes, Susan?
We need to, I would like to ask that we remove the safety plan. I haven't had a chance to fully review it yet. It's pretty long. So I'd like, and it isn't due until July. So I'd like to postpone that until July.
So 3.5, 2021, 2022, safety plan approval will be moved to next month. Do we need to make a motion for that? Or are we just going to agree to remove it?
You don't need a motion.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Any other agenda modifications? So do we have any audience to address the council? Nope. If you see a hand up, let me know. And the consent agenda, we do need to move to accept this consent agenda, correct? You guys can help me out.
Yes, we do, Vicki.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any changes? No. Could someone make a motion to accept the consent agenda?
This is Chelsea, and I-
I move to accept the consent agenda.
I will second.
Thank you. Laurel made the motion, and Chelsea seconded it. Can we have, let's see, I'll do a roll call vote. Vicki, want to cut? Aye. Laurel Hill Ward?
Aye.
Chelsea Parker?
Aye.
Amber Brown?
Aye.
And that's everybody, and the motion passes. Okay. Um. Moving on. Learning Continuity Action Plan, the LCAP public hearing is our next is our next item on the agenda, and that is Susan?
Should we have the finance committee report first?
Oh, I'm not reading the right thing. Okay. Now I'm on the right one. All right. Yes, I'm sorry. I was on the wrong agenda. So item 3.1, Finance Committee Report. Thank you, Chelsea.
So at our most recent finance committee, sorry, just making sure I'm looking at the right notes. We reviewed and recommended a budget for approval, as well as reviewing and recommending the LCAP for approval. And reviewed the and just reestablished the finance committee as the Sustainable School Task Force. We're very excited about the budget. We have a conservative ADA that matches what our actual expected, no hopes and dreams, and it comfortably includes the updated salary schedule for the certificated and classified, as well as administrative salary scales. So it looks good. For the LCAP this year, and I know Susan will go over this, but the LCAP review that we did this year, it includes, for the first time, the full budget. And so we'll see that when they review the LCAP, and that is the budget that we are recommending for approval is what's included there.
Thank you, Chelsea. Any questions, comments? Moving right along to item 3.2, Parent Council Report from Tricia, who didn't make it today. Do we have any other parent who happened to be there? Then we will move along to the LCAP approval, item 3.3. And we looked at this last week. Right? No, yeah, last week.
So the this is the formal need to formally approve the LCAP. We reviewed it and had our public hearing last week with no questions. We went over it. Again, we have the three questions that are related to the state level expectations, and we put the information under that. We have, the questions and so forth come from the various community inputs, and were written to fit the LCAP. They do, there are a few changes from last week in some of the language, any of the descriptions that I worked on, and some of the numbers for the budget that Jim worked on. But of course, that because because we're in the process that's fine to make those changes. We don't have to have another hearing because of those are fairly minor. And as Chelsea mentioned, we did for the first time because of recommendations from CBE and New Finance Education, include the full budget. So if you were to go back and compare last year, our dollars this year looked phenomenally worth it. However, look to the actual budgets that we have for comparison rather than the LCAP. So they're wanting to look, and especially when you look at the parent report as that's part of this package, you'll see how it's much clearer for a parent where we're spending the majority of our money instead of just showing where we're spending our additional funds. So I feel like this process, though a little harder for us to prepare, is better. The other thing that you'll see is that if, for example, faculty costs are, or office costs are in one place, the first place we come, we put all of those costs. We're not breaking them out. So you'll see later on in the document the words previously reported are something to that extent. So we can show that where we're spending faculty dollars, but not the specific dollar amount per goal, that becomes very hard to track and very, and really is just kind of an overkill for this. So we're not doing it. Are there any questions?
We spent quite a bit of time on this last week, so.
And you've seen that, seen all of the questions and the input in previous meetings as well, so not a lot of new here. This is just the format, really.
All right. So are we ready to make a motion? Do we have any further discussion and questions? Then I move that we accept the proposed LCAP Local Control and Accountability Plan as presented. And thank you for all your hard work, Susan. Do we have a second?
I'll second it. This is Amber Brown.
Thank you, Amber. And Vicki, want to cut votes? Aye. Laurel Hill Ward? Laurel Hill Ward?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Chelsea Parker?
Aye.
Amber Brown?
Aye.
All right, and it passed. Good job, guys. Thank you. Item 3 point oh my gosh, I don't even know where I am now. I have to go back. 3.4, I can't read it in front of me. What does it say?
And that's the budget approval. And for this, as I spoke to during the finance report, our budget is comfortable this year. We did not, for the first time in many years, have to look at reductions or cuts in any of our categories. And you'll see there are a couple of revenues that look lower than previous years, and that is due to additional funds coming in that have to be spent in the next year. So we took some of the money out of categories that could be pushed out years to ensure that instead of having one really fat financial year, that we have the multi-year forecast is very steady and is able to support all of our programs comfortably. So that's why some of the revenue streams, it's like, why all this stuff are we getting less? It's not that we're getting less. We're just accounting for them in the out years to balance. A good balance.
All right. Thank you, Chelsea. We need a motion to approve the budget if we have no further questions or discussion.
I move to approve the budget.
I'll second that. And voting on the budget approval, Vicki want to cut? Aye. Laurel Hill Ward?
Aye.
Chelsea Parker?
Aye.
Did you hear?
Yes. And Amber Brown?
Aye.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you very much. And moving on to item 3.6, the ELA Curriculum Approval with Jennifer. Is Jennifer here?
I am.
So don't unmute.
Hi, Jennifer.
I might otherwise get feedback. I was wondering how we're doing that so well. Okay. You guys can't hear me at home. This is exciting. I'm on microphone. So I just sent out, or I shared the document with ECO, BOCC, Alex and Susan, and then I will add Rachel and Riley. Is Brianna there, too?
No, Nick is there.
Oh, duh, sorry, Nick. Riley and Nick. Hi, Nick. Nice to see you there.
Is Nick, Nick's our new Brianna.
Yeah, I didn't make the summer switch in my mind.
Okay.
No? Sadler Implementation Proposal. And then up here. Oh, yeah, thanks. Okay. Are you still at BOCC, a blue church?
You know, I view that might be a problem.
So I mean, like, everyone in the culture of council, definitely.
I don't know that, actually, that.
Good to know. Yeah, okay. Well, here we are. So Sadler Implementation, this is really exciting. This is a couple of years in the coming. And Amber, you might be the only person I don't know other than, oh, Chris, Jim, and Laurel. I'm sorry, I don't know you either. I'm Jennifer. I have taught here for 11 years. My first generation, I taught 3rd through 8th grade. I moved down. I just finished teaching 1 through 5, and this past year I was the ELA lead teacher or faculty rep for Sadler Piloting Curriculum and Staff Selection. So very exciting. We have, at this point, in a little history, we have piloted numerous curriculum at our school. The first one that I recall was Chicago, University of Chicago, Everyday Mathematics. And then we brought on CPM, and then we brought in MyMath. And then around the same time that we brought in Bridges, we also considered piloting Sadler. And two years ago, there was a team made up of many teachers and support staff to look at a sampling of all different types of curriculum. And the curriculum that we decided to move forward with piloting, which means actually using for instruction for an academic year before committing as a school on policy and procedure, was the Sadler. And so to put this in perspective, there are four main branches on the tree of Sadler. And typically, each student is only working with three branches at a time. But given our unique setting, where we have a delayed onset of accelerated instruction, meaning we're not having direct instruction of phonics Level A kindergarten, we're primarily working with phonemic awareness, which is just sound orientation, being able to segment sounds, beginning, middle, and final sounds, as well as being able to rhyme and hear. And we do a lot of that with our Rachel Oral Language Program. Linguistically speaking, worldwide, if you go back to college and think of the International Phonemic Alphabet, the IPA, where linguists will go and they'll translate indigenous languages to record them before they're lost forever. That essentially is what phonemic awareness is, or phonies, crucial sounds. Because a baby, as we all know, is experimenting with every sound they could possibly use in communication. In our English language, we don't really hold on to certain "jus" in French, or let me know if I'm going on to any tangents. So we lose some sounds, but we hold on to the ones that are crucial. And then in our developmental approach to education, once we are seeing that the body's energy that goes towards to developing the physical being, which ends at about seven years, the sign that the child's development can then focus on cognition, crossing the right and left side of the brain, is shown by the losing of teeth. And we look at that in kindergarten, you know, can a child skip? Can a child cross their midline? Are they starting to lose teeth? That means all of the forces and energy and all of their nutrition and sleep that is going to full molding their physical body can now focus in the head and the heart while the body sits still in order to receive. And then we get to phonics. So that's our first main branch of the tree. And our phonics instruction that we're hoping to implement has three books, Phonics A, B, and C. Each one is a different color. In a mainstream setting, Phonics A would start in kindergarten with the kindergarten curriculum, but in our setting, it would be first grade. In addition, there is vocabulary, first through 8th grade. There is progress, which is essentially reading and writing, not reading in the sense of phonics, which is looking at decoding how words are built and how they're broken apart. So many people in the world learn to read by sight, which means they maxed out at about a 4th grade lexicon of just memorizing words by sight. And then if they try to move beyond that, they can't decode. And those are the skills of phonics, like back to those 90s commercials of Hooked on Phonics. But whether or not you get phonics, ultimately, you will be a reader. And reading and writing is where progress comes in. And this is really looking beyond the surface level of reading and writing, which is much more what Common Core is all about. You know, it's not just can you make a guess one out of four on A, B, C, D, coloring in a bubble? If you have something, you actually have to explain your thinking and have some intelligence behind it, or, you know, your own thought. And so progress is really helping children not only think about what they read, but how to analyze what they read from the very beginning. So we're not just jumping from Dick and Jane books to like, here's a novel, now I want you to pull quotes and write an essay analyzing the characters. There are so many steps, as you know, going from point A to point B. And then lastly, the fourth branch is grammar, and this begins in 3rd grade. So essentially, what happens in our school, which we discovered in the same way that we were exploring math curriculum a few years ago, of this delayed onset of accelerated instruction, what that translates to in elementary school is essentially, we have then six years of standards, six years of instruction to teach in five, because we're not doing the kindergarten part until 1st grade, right? And so how do we do that? How do we do it well? How do we do that while upholding the development of the child and not being too workbook heavy? Or not being too bound by assessment or data defining who a child is or who they could be? In the past, we have struggled not having a curriculum because a teacher has only so much creative forces, right? And anyone who's in education who loves to teach and loves kids can come up with a creative way to bring a standard up to life and to teach a group of children. But to do that for every single standard, every day, all day, every week, every year, constantly being brand new, a lot of those creative forces get used up, and they're not able to then be be invested in music and storytelling and all the other ways that we bring creativity to the children. And so having a curriculum is not only, you know, just good for everybody as far as test scores, prep, or school's sustainability, finances-wise, but also just so that you don't have to have, as a teacher, you don't have to feel like Atlas holding up the world. You know, whether we have a grammar workbook or a teacher is creating their own exercises, essentially, someone has to come up with a meaningful exercise in order for the student to have purposeful practice, right? And there's a big distinction in our school as far as curriculum and implementation of what that looks like, because from the outside, we advertise, oh, we're a textbook-free school, and your kids won't have textbooks. They're going to make their own textbooks. And that is 100% true for, you know, social science and science. But when it comes to subjects that do require independent practice, methodical, daily, you could call that in a negative way, drill and kill. That's a glass half-empty view. Or just meaningful practice. You could have the most flourishing multiplication fact lesson, and then at the end of the day, you're still going to need to sit down with flashcards or something to ensure that you memorize your multiplication facts, right? And the same thing goes with digraphic sentences, or actually applying vocabulary, or breaking apart and analyzing passages and writing, not just for the sake of your content, but your actual style. And so how do we do that as a Waldorf School? The main thing, and then I'll get to this document, because I'm a talker, not a note taker. The main thing I want you to hear me say is by moving to the direction of adopting curriculum, we are not saying that we are using workbooks in the place of instruction, or that we are just becoming a, just another paper school. And I want to create a specific example for that. So thinking about 1st grade. From the first day of 1st grade, we actually start with the phonics reading, Level A. And if you were to open this up to Lesson 1, research-based, it is brought out through the content of how we would want to approach phonics, the order, right? We, as 1st grade teachers, or we as a school in 1st grade, we introduce letters in the alphabet through stories, and we would continue to do so. But instead of saying, hmm, what letter do I want to do first? Should I do T, like Rapunzel's Tower, or should I do B, as in the mama bear? We would then just follow the pacing guide that the curriculum offers. So we would still tell a story. We would still introduce that that phonics symbol of the "b" or the "b" to go for the "b" sound. And we would have lots of rich language, hopefully incorporating our bimonthly vocabulary list and our storytelling. So we're really building a lexicon of the children. And then when we apply it into our books and we're drawing a picture to connect to the heart of the child and go into long-term memory, that is, that's that. And then there's always that third next piece, whether it's a chalk slate or a whiteboard, or scrap paper, or an independent workbook page. And that's where this would fit in. We wouldn't start here, like, dear class, open to page 17. Today, we are going to learn about la-la-la. It's not necessarily how that would go. Now, as children get older, that would shift slightly, because we're not trying to have everything be wishy-washy. We want the children to be able to attain concepts cognitively without a story attached to it. And it's a delicate balance. That is the art of being a Waldorf teacher. So transitioning into implementation of how this breaks down, and that's this document. You can scroll just a little bit to 1st grade, 2nd grade, etc. So how, oh, backing up just a second. So we, teachers had access to this curriculum this year, and they were encouraged to implement and pilot this program. Now, granted, it was COVID. Teachers were not recommended or in trouble if they didn't do that. But they definitely were able to gain a personal look at how this curriculum could work for our school in order to have a voice, essentially, in the voting process. And following the first semester of implementation, we met as a team, or I'm sorry, I met with Susan, and Susan directed me to create a survey. So just a passall for everyone of, you know, what have you used? When have you used it? How have you used it? How do you feel about how you used it? How do your students feel about how you used it? And ultimately, what is your impression, or would you recommend, would you recommend this curriculum? And every teacher who actually implemented it consistently for three weeks or more, their data went into a pool of surveys. You know, because if a teacher tried it for two days, that's not really piloting the program, right? So Susan's ideal was like six weeks of instruction, but I went ahead and included data even for three weeks of instruction and trying to get every voice that really put in that time a reflection. And then we met. So then we met as a lower grades team, and then the upper grades team met, and there were a couple of different meetings. And the bulk of the work happened with the lower grades team, because that's where we had to figure out that six years of instruction in five years scenario. And then middle school is middle school, because essentially, when a child goes on to middle school, they should be on par with every other 6th grader in Chico. You know, there's no shifting shelves in middle school. And ideally, we also wanted, not ideally, our expectation was that children would be finished with reading instruction of primarily phonics by 3rd grade, so that we're not pushing phonics into 4th grade, because we really want to hold to our roots that, you know, we teach reading with a delayed onset, but by the nine-year change, a child is right there with the rest of Chico. So how that looks like is in 1st grade, we're doing all of kindergarten phonics, and we're doing half of 1st grade phonics. So in 1st grade, we're doing a year and a half of phonics. In 1st grade, we're doing all of kindergarten reading and writing. In first grade, we're doing all of kindergarten reading and writing. And then we are doing first grade level vocabulary. In second grade, it would be the second half of first grade and all of second grade in phonics. It would be first grade reading and writing, and then second grade vocabulary. And then third grade is our year of starting to level out. So we have our third phonics, second grade reading and writing, third grade grammar, and third grade vocab. And the team really decided that, okay, so in third grade, that's the one year that children have four books, clearly too much, right? So what can we do there? And then the, all of the lower grades teachers that were there were really chewing on this idea, well, like what's crucial and what's not, what could the teacher create? And ultimately, the team decided, you know, teachers have different skill sets. And ultimately, the grammar and vocab could more easily be used as a supplement depending on the teacher's skill set. So Sheila's an example of someone who feels great about creating her own grammar lessons using Grammar Guide. And Kate was someone who felt great about using vocabulary as a supplement. And so then, you know, there is that room for teacher creativity like we prefer. And that is, that creates it so that by fourth grade, we're doing third grade reading and writing, fourth grade vocab, fourth grade grammar. And then hallelujah, fifth grade. We have fourth and fifth grade reading and writing, just used for differentiations, they're more similar. Fifth grade vocab, fifth grade grammar. So that by the time we get to sixth through eighth grade, it is at grade level. And the preference of the middle school teachers is to keep progress as a teacher discretion. So some middle school teachers feel great about using progress with their kids. Some prefer to take it and use those same lessons more implicitly and create their own work through main lesson. And as, you know, would be expected for middle schoolers who didn't have five or six years of progress, the middle school progress is really challenging. So the students and teachers didn't have as much success, but they didn't want to just throw it out for the whole school because the kids didn't have background experience, right? So we are balancing that out. And then the rest of the notes here are just spelling out what I've said before. The main thing with vocab is that vocabulary is one of the areas that we really need a lot of improvement on as a school. It's very close to my heart, it's being a ceiling breaker for socioeconomic status. You know, when you think about the high schooler who's really trying to boost their SAT score and get out of town, right? I had multiple friends like that when I was growing up. And building your lexicon, being able to write well, speak well, utilize a wealth of vocabulary, really is not just a sign of intelligence, but education. So how can we do that? Well, the vocab specifically isn't so much of a daily thing or a weekly thing. Each unit breaks into two weeks. And those vocab words can be used in teacher storytelling as well as student writing samples or writing in class. And then vocab for most teachers is just being used as a homework book. Because it's pretty much, once you get it done with the first unit, it's all the same. It's just really, it's repetitive in a good way because they're building diverse language, but the structure of it is really predictable. It's the easiest for any parent to help their child at home. So it's really an equity piece as far as homework goes. And then that allows us to have, especially in the middle school, only two workbooks that can rotate in ELA periods. And lastly, before I take a breath, answer your questions, domains not covered. This came up especially in the lower grades meeting. Spelling is not covered in this. And we are so lucky that Ellie G. is our new ELA specialist, right? And she has already created a program to pilot this year. And we'll probably be presenting that at some point, using the words their way, as well as English as a Second Language research and materials. Handwriting, another one close to my heart. Susan's already talked about this so many times. But Learning Without Tears was a program that we primarily used in special education and for occupational therapy. And it has moved on to mainstream classes. And it is so good. And we as a school, we really need to improve our spelling. We really need to improve our handwriting. And those are tools that are great, that are included. And then with writing, different teachers have had different experiences where progress doesn't necessarily do enough to really teach writing in the lower grades. I do not have personal experience on that, I'm trusting my colleagues in what they say. And I know Sarah Lee would really like to pilot the Step Up to Writing Program that many schools are using successfully. Also coming from special ed into gen ed, following that UDL model. And then just the last feature was our team taking inventory of materials. So that's all, I'm ready for your questions, and thank you for listening.
I have a comment. I know our class is one of the ones that used this program pretty consistently this year. And as a parent, especially because I kept my son at home learning for the first semester, I thought it was very well laid out, the instructions very clear. And so for that sixth grade year, it felt like it went well with the curriculum. It was already being utilized in the class, if that makes sense. Like the Waldorf piece, when this more mainstream piece, it seems like it worked very well together. And so for a pilot year, in a weird year, I was very pleasantly surprised with how well it seemed to work.
And I forgot to mention, there's a whole online component that's really great. Resources for parents, resources for teachers. The, there's even assessments that you can take online. Tyson did quizzes online for various things. But there's, it's a very up-to-date program that aligns with Common Core. If Riley or Nick wants to add anything from their experience. Any concerns about implementing a new ELA curriculum?
I actually, I have, I was just waiting for it to know when I'll say.
Sure.
I have a lot of experience. Okay, do you want to go first, Laurel?
Oh, go ahead, and I'll go after you.
So normally, I would have zero experience with it and probably be completely lost. But since I had a second grader last year, I'm actually really familiar with it. And we use the phonics book quite a bit. He was home for, you know, the beginning, whenever else was home. And I found it pretty easy to use as somebody that knew nothing about it. And I also, I didn't know that it was new. Now, thinking back, that makes sense, just thinking back to first grade. But I do think that you're right about pretty much everything you said. Integrated Sign, K E B. We still did a lot of main lesson stuff, we still have all of our main lessons pages to come home. They went with the phonics book, a lot of it was kind of flowed together. So I didn't, that's why I didn't really notice as a parent, that we were really doing anything different. I thought they always worked with those books. Maybe I'm not as in tune with that as some of the curriculum, but I didn't realize. So it worked well, I will put that. It definitely integrated fine, and I didn't feel like, I felt like it added a lot. My son struggled a lot in first grade. And he, it really came around for the second grade. And I don't know if it's just teacher Waldorf or what it was. But I know that we did a lot of work in that book as far as for reading. And if lights turned on for him, and if we were working in that book at home, you know, with me not having any of the teacher experience. So if that happened for him with that, then I would say that obviously there's no issues there. Like it definitely does the work for them, and it made a lot of sense. A lot of the phonics rules were things I remembered from being a kid too. So it wasn't like too far from what I knew, you know? Some of the wording was a little different, but otherwise not. And then I was gonna ask, because like, I know Lee struggled with using the progress book. She didn't use the progress book because I think a lot of our second graders were behind because they lost, you know, a good chance.
Yeah, there's another piece with that, sorry to interrupt. So the connection is the progress that went home with you was second grade progress. And what the lower grades team decided was let's do one grade level lower so that it's inclusive of everybody.
That makes, yeah.
And then if he had had perhaps a first grade progress book, it wouldn't have hit, it would have stayed in his zone.
And then, and I would say the same thing for the phonics, right? Because I think they went to the first grade one in second grade. They, but a half a year of loss, and then also not being in the kindergarten one. So I know it was quite a bit of a struggle for some of the second grade. But we got through it, and I, my son came home, this book was completed by the end of the year. So I still had that to come home with and see. So I enjoyed it, I thought the curriculum was great. All the concerns that you have with, in regards to the school and some of our test scores and some of the, are all the same concerns I have and stuff I've brought up. So the fact that they're being addressed and addressed this way, I think it's great too. Most of mine's just comments. I was gonna ask, can they kind of jump around in the books if they're finding that students are progressing faster? Or is that, it seems like they have a lot of flexibility.
Yeah, so we haven't developed yet the intervention program that will coincide under this, right? Because what we're doing is we are solidifying our gen ed. And then next year's work is really taking a look at our tier two. Or like, hey, didn't, it didn't work on the first pass, so now what? What's really great with this, and I will say, there's a lot of excellent curriculum out there. Just because we chose Sadware doesn't mean that there is another great curriculum. But what we had to try to find as a charter school is something that went first through eighth grade. Because we really wanted continuity in language arts in a way that we couldn't get with mathematics. And so that kind of narrowed us down. And then having something that is levelized does allow us an intervention to go back to that. So I had, for example, in my fifth grade class last year, multiple children who were still at a first grade level in reading with special education. And they just then used this book, right? And with their, and so they're still following through. And while they're receiving gen ed instruction and picking up what they can, there's, there's a relationship there because they're still in the same umbrella. It's not, that part hasn't been established yet, but the opportunity is there to explore if it's the best course.
Okay, because that one, I think there were some that I think had a hard time with that book. But it was obvious, yeah, there's a reason, not necessarily the teacher, but just the situation. And then we also did the Learning Without Tears, and I love that. Oh yes, yeah, so we did that too, and that was great. And it was, a lot of that got sent home, and that was easy at home too. As a parent, some of that got sent home, so. And then also, that was my comment about vocabulary, that's an easy one as a parent to be sent home. That's generally what happens with those, so. That was all my questions and comments, but yeah, we worked with, I worked with a lot with my second grader. I, I don't have much to compare it to, but I didn't find it difficult. So, and I found it to work really great. And like I said, the light turned on for him this year, and he started reading. So it has to contribute some to that, yeah. And he was home with mom, so.
I'll address from an extension, which is the other end. So here's where everybody's on grade level. And then, and then, you know, what Jennifer talked about is if they didn't get it, then we need to, for some reason, go back, and that's what she's talking about. And the other pieces is if it's really easy for them, and they're catching up, how do we do? And we really look to the teachers to give additional work rather than moving them forward in the grade level books. So it's more like, okay, can we do more writing? Can we expand the use of the vocab? That sort of thing with the new grade level. So then you don't end up in two years being more just, and then being way off of disconnected with their peers and.
I think they've learned what they need to know for that age, and they can kind of branch off into things of, yeah. That's good, I know, that was my main thing, do the teachers have some flexibility? Because I think that's the thing that we love about this school. And it is a little different depending on the teacher and how they look at it.
So yeah, that's what we love about our administration, is that that is the directive. And we're very lucky that that is so. Because it is scary, whenever a faculty or a school adopts a curriculum, if the pendulum might swing, right? Because it's the person who's giving the direction that has that power. And we're very fortunate to have an administrator, an administration that says, yes, we need to have a curriculum. Yes, we need to be doing what we've also need to be doing. But let's remember, this is a charter school setting, which means you have creativity as a teacher to get to the same endpoint as the person down the hall. That, you know, following our pedagogy. So it's like a loose detour, I would say. There are still intentions from our pedagogy. Laurel, did you still have a question?
Laurel Hill Ward, did you have a question? I had a comment. I wanted to just say how amazing I think the teachers are to approach this curriculum that way and make it fit for their students. And also the fact that in these two, three extraordinary years, they have adapted not only a new ELA, but a new math curriculum, which is a big deal. It's a very big deal, especially with the type of teaching that had to go on. So bravo, and thank you.
Thanks, Vicki. Commendation and appreciation are always just so loving.
It looks like Laurel has put her hand down.
Okay, all right.
I did, I did want to just jump in. I wanted to thank them for an excellent, thank Jennifer for an excellent presentation. It sounds like they're just doing great work. But I also wanted to just make a comment. You know, we do studies about when it begins for a child dropping out, you know? And we can trace it back quite a ways. And her remark about parents being able to help makes me think, maybe we should study more about what parent, what, at what point parents begin to drop out of trying to support their children in learning and supporting the school. And I particularly appreciated, you know, your attention to what it's like for the EL parent or the parent who maybe struggles himself in school. And so Jennifer, I just want to comment that I really appreciate that you're looking at that piece too. And thank you for all your work on that. That's it.
I had one more question, brief. So you discussed, I believe, that this is the second grade book that would be then happen first grade, happen second grade. First grade, the first, the half and first, half and second. And so with that, obviously, it would just be worked out. But maybe if I didn't ask the first question of, would that book then be purchased twice for the same student? Or because the students carry on with the same teacher, that set would just then be maintained on site? Because I'm a parent, and you can be sure that I probably won't be able to find it at the end of summer to send it back to my student. I will be honest.
Yeah, so what that looks like.
That would just be held on site.
So think of it as semester. So essentially, fall semester, a child would have kindergarten progress. So all of fall semester, and then probably like, hey, your report cards are due, and a new book is coming home. Or maybe it's spring break time, depending on how the first grade teacher pieces it out. But essentially, the progress book may never be going home. It'll be staying in the classroom. And it'll be used for, that book will be used for half of first grade. And then just like their block crayons, or their colored pencils, or their paintbrushes, the teachers keep really good track of, hopefully, their expensive materials. And then there'll always be a need for a little surplus for new students, right? And so we would have that. But essentially, yeah, a student would end first grade halfway done with one book. And then when they come back, or come back in second grade, they would be finishing that book before moving on to the next one. And the first grade teacher would need the teacher guides for both. And the second grade teacher would need the teacher guides for both. And we did all the numbers in the inventory list there.
I think that's great. Yeah, I remember the resource was being good too, because I think he had some, had sent some home to the. Yeah, I remember the resources being good too, because I think P G had some, had set some home to the parents. And to Laurel's point, that was so helpful, because I think one of the struggles for the parents is if you don't understand why you're teaching a kid something, it's hard to teach it to them. You know, like not understanding what, what the end game is, you know? Or maybe that's just based on some of our personalities. But like, that can be difficult when you're trying to teach them something and you're not sure. You know, cause you do certain things as a teacher because you're getting to say, you know, just have faith, we'll get there. But as parents, we don't know, because we didn't go through credentialing.
I have faith, but I don't know how to do it.
Yeah, and so she would send us.
I know, that's what all the Facebook needs to go through.
Yeah. So she would send us sometimes some of the guides or probably tips that she got from the guides. And I remember those being really helpful too.
Yeah.
On how to navigate the book or.
And Katie's exemplary with her communication. So I tell you that every class parent will have the experience you did. But rest assured that the, I think it has been a saving grace for our school that we did have curriculum. Because even I know in the spring, as a Waldorf teacher and parent, I super struggled to do my own stuff in addition to being a Waldorf parent for distance learning in the spring. And that's when I even know what to do, right? So it's kind of, it was the saving grace for our school community as a whole, I think, this year that we had a more traditional other arm, you know? That we had our, our traditional Waldorf methods. And then for those children who simply did not have the parent at home who's able to keep track of all their materials or set them up in a very kindergarten Waldorf-esque environment, that they were still accessing that location. Because at the end of the day, our two primary, our two primary lawful things are, you know, childcare for the working class and access to standards. And that's what we offer the children of America. And then we try to do so much more than that. So that's our baseline. Safety and standards and then.
I guess I didn't articulate well, but that was kind of my point. It's like, I didn't really realize that we weren't using it, but what a difference. Because I remember like Ginger trying to send home resources to parents. And it was really difficult because the way you guys teach is so specific. And it was just, it was, and then getting it, but it was a different teacher. So I guess that, again, I just didn't notice, but it was much easier the second time around. We had, you know, the book.
I think you hit the nail on the head. Because when we discussed this in groups that I was involved with, there was definitely the, this was, one of the things that teachers really appreciated about that is they didn't have to go find the resources. And what you're, what you're saying is Ginger had to go find different resources.
Yes.
And it came this year, had it. And was able to, to give you a consistent type of information from the same publisher with what we say in the same voice. So we were going, okay, now I'm using this.
Yes.
And now I'm going to use this and I'm confused.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Instead it's like, okay, here's the same format, you're going to use the same format. And so much easier to do as work and homework. This year will be easier because you have that format.
And if they tie in for the parents, it's got to tie in for the kids too. And I think from a big picture perspective, it also makes it easier to articulate outside of the walls of this school, outside of the people who understand how the Waldorf education works. It also, I think, helps to articulate how we're executing those standards and not just have faith and send your kid here. It really works. It's like, well, these are the standards that we're teaching and this is how we've split it up to, to marry it with the Waldorf style of teaching. But you can see that we are still utilizing the curriculum to work with different methods of teaching set through. I really, I really appreciate like that and from a, just a big picture perspective, of just to really show and highlight and showcase the work that is already entrusting in there and to supplement and support the teachers doing that work.
And I think, I think you're right, Chelsea. And that's, that is what feels supported. A child feels awesome when the light bulb goes on because they've been given a plethora of tools in order to turn on the light. And a teacher feels awesome when they're teaching and they have all these tools just being given to them to utilize. And it really, we're in a time in our culture as a school where we're really paying attention to prejudice, right? And we're really taking a look in all different lenses of what we've used to say was good and bad or right and wrong. We're looking a little closer and asking harder questions and ultimately holding the child at the heart. And we definitely have come from a decade of worksheet prejudice at our school, right? Yeah, like anti-worksheet, anti-curriculum. And you know, if the teacher is drawing something and then making photocopies, it's actually more expensive and less sustainable than having something that's created for them, right? And it was like, it was the like Wizard of Oz curtain. Cause it was like, oh, we don't have textbooks in the classroom. And so it's just, it allows us in my mind to have a little levity to not be afraid of what is normal, to look at best practices, research, open our minds creatively, like this is my box and nothing fits, you know? Not moving from one extreme to another. And I think we have an exceptional staff that is really paying attention to that. I don't think we're going to become a school that is all workbooks and all worksheets. That would be a sincere risk in doing this. But we haven't done that with math and I don't foresee us doing that with language arts. And I just want to do a shout out to Riley, who is one of the most exceptional teachers at our school. And what I would say is form your conclusion on this curriculum upon her and her students graduating eighth grade. Because then you will have had half of the whole curriculum. And like, those are the test scores I recommend really looking at. You have a solid grade level of instruction, consistency of educator, just high standards and all, all of the things that we would want in order to cut out the variables of, is it the curriculum or is it something else? You know, it's, it's all of it combined in one package. And we won't really be able to look at our test scores this year or next year and be like, wow, sadly, it worked great. I, I think it's more of a three to five year thing. And I would look at, let's see, Riley, you're fifth in twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five? Class of two thousand twenty-five? Yeah, right? Okay, cause I was, yeah, that makes sense, because mine were two thousand twenty-four. So yeah, class of two thousand twenty-five, those are the scores I would take a look at. And that's, that would be my recommendation to revisit this curriculum. If in two thousand twenty-five, our test scores are not, no pressure, Riley. But what I mean is, like, give it, give us that much time, is all I can say. Give it that much time, please.
Riley, there's a good, she has, there'll be several new board members by then.
No one will remember my words. I hope they're not being typed. It's just for those present. Okay, that's all, that's my presentation.
Alright, thank you very much, Jennifer. Well done. Thank you.
So you need some of us?
We need a motion.
Do you, do you want me to, do we just say Sadler or do we need to spell it out, like what when?
They just need to say Sadler.
You guys can say it or what, when.
Curriculum as presented.
So Vicky, this is Chelsea and I would like to make a motion that we accept the ELA curriculum as presented. This is Amber Brown, and I'll second that.
Alright, thank you both. Any further discussion or questions? Then let's have a roll call vote. Vicky, wanna cut? Aye. Laurel Hill Ward?
Aye.
Chelsea Parker?
Aye.
Amber Brown?
Aye.
Alright, thank you all very much. And we're moving on to item four, the grade level report for point one.
Hello, hello.
Hi, Riley.
Here we are, meeting once again. Sorry, I just saw the screen change. Okay, there we go. Hi. Um, so we are in summer. Woo, woo. Some teachers have jumped right into working summer jobs. Many teachers turned in their computers on Friday. So some have not even yet checked the notes and whatnot that have just been typed because they have started relaxing. Other teachers have started their summer training courses. I know I did the first part of my summer training last week. And I will soon be leaving for Washington for my Waldorf cred certificate program. So that's exciting and nerve wracking. Yeah, all around, teachers are taking time to do what is important to them and to get ready for the next year. So I think we're all feeling very thankful. It was a long year, as you all know. And now this is our time to collect ourselves and make ourselves ready for a new beginning. Nick, do you have anything to add?
Nope.
Okay.
Any questions, anything else to add?
No, I think we're all good. I hope you enjoy your training and I hope anyone that's doing training or vacationing or just being plain lazy really enjoys it. So, good for you guys.
Yes, definitely. Doing whatever we need. I myself have been harvesting a lot from my garden too. I know, Vicky, you'd be proud of that.
Good job, good job. Alrighty, we will conclude that open meeting and move into closed session. So thank you all for coming. And we will see you July twentieth, I hope, for the next meeting. But we, Alex, will you move us into closed session, please?
Yes, I'm working on it right now.
Thank you.
Alex, will the group be coming back together or is this the official close for us?
I think there's one more item after closed session, which is the executive director's report.
Ah, yes, thank you. So Nick and I will hang out.
Thank you.
In a breakout room? Okay. Thank you.
I think that was everyone. Nice to see your smiles.
Good to know you're there. Taking us out.
Okay, we got everybody.
And then I will leave the room and let me just stop. Alright, we're out.
Alright, it was better hot. We are, we on the stage are sitting in the sun and everybody else gets to sit in the shade, so. But you know, when you listen to the teachers talk about the students that are, are moving forward and watch the faces of the students as they do that and the individual, you know, comments they make, it's just this amazing connection and beauty that is selling these things. So I want to please invite the board to consider coming next year, being a part of that, that celebration, because all of the staff is there as well as the families of the eighth graders. And it truly is a beautiful finishing of their time with us. And, and the students also speak and they often speak about their experiences through the grades. And, and it's, it's wonderful to see them and hear their perspective of their time at the club as well. So, and they said, a couple of them said, you know, I'll never be anywhere as long as I was here. They were nine, you know, nine years, they will not be in another school for nine years, more than likely. And their time, so they really have had an understanding of the beauty and, and the, the depth of being here, so. And then I just shared favorite moments. Foxears in the second grade, fourth grade had a great time with a water fight. And then one of the students talking about having a liking of one on two point one of his walking talk. Just that. The, we completed the move. It was, you know, from my perspective, it was fairly well orchestrated and really a lot of working together and teamwork and I appreciated that. And then summer hours, I think we changed these labels this Friday. Alex, is it nine to one now?
Nine to one, yes.
Nine to one. So the office will be open and we'll post that from nine to one on Mondays to Thursdays. And that was an agreement with staff as to when they were going to be able to be here and cover and keep that and prepare it. So we'll get that posted. Other than that, test scores officially came out today in secret. And I opened the documents, it's a secret for me and Karun to look at. And I opened the document, I have no idea what it says, so I need Karun. And so we'll, it's very secret, so all in code. So I have to figure out the code. And so that should, that will be coming out publicly, I believe, the twenty-second of this month. So we'll see what's going on with that. And as you said, really encouraging everyone to take a deep breath and rest. And we're starting our list of summer projects on my whiteboard of the things that we want to get done and then what we have to get done and then what's realistic for us to actually get done. So we're doing that and moving forward. And that's where we are in June.
Okay. Alrighty, wow, seven fifty-six, two hours. Way to go, people. We will see you all. I'm adjourning the meeting. Are we ready to adjourn?
Ready.
Anything further? Alright, we'll see you Tuesday, July twentieth. At six PM is our next meeting. Enjoy your time off, everyone. Relax and rest and just find lots of joy in life. Okay? Good night.
Good night, Vicky, thank you.
Uh huh, good night.